Good to see you, Selectman Anderson.
I kept hitting that button, but it wasn't doing anything.
Listen, I know it's the button and it's not you, so, alright, alright, here we go. Action-packed meeting, let's get to it. Uh, time's now six thirty. In accordance with Chapter Two of the Acts of 2025, the Tuesday, May twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, six-thirty, public meeting of the Rantham Select Board shall be conducted remotely. Public is invited to join, join via Zoom. Instructions are on, uh, the home, website homepage. As a preliminary matter, this is Select Board Chair Chris Gallo. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jim Anderson?
Yeah.
Uh, Bill Harrington?
Here.
Shell Rouse?
Yeah, here.
Roy Lamoth? Yeah.
Yeah. How's it?
We try to have fun, folks, on these meetings. Staff, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Town Manager Mike King?
Present.
Assistant Town Manager Greg Ennis?
Present.
Hope your shoulder's doing good. Executive Assistant Amanda Vazapolo?
Present.
Excellent. Okay, meeting is now open. We're gonna go to tab, uh, remind me, we have a six-fifty public hearing. You guys know how I, I always screw those up, so please, uh, help me try to stay on track. At this time, though, I'm gonna turn it over to Selectman Harrington, our clerk. I'd ask you, please read the announcements.
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, agenda item for now, announcements. EverSource will be installing a new gas main on Creek Street. The road will be closed to through traffic effective May thirteenth through August. Monday through Friday, seven AM to three PM. Detours will be in place, directing traffic through the center of town. Delays can be expected. Businesses are open and accessible during construction. If you have any questions or need any additional information regarding this project, please contact EverSource's construction partner, Patty Shaw Mulaney, at eight-five-five-six-four-five-two-four-two-seven. The annual Memorial Day Parade and Observance will be held on Monday, May twenty-sixth, starting at ten-thirty AM. The parade will begin at King Philip Plaza. Head to the Rantham Cemetery for remarks and conclude at the Town Common for a roll call of veterans who did not return. Water rates are set to increase by six percent effective July first, twenty-twenty-five. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Alright, thank you. Hope to see everybody, townspeople. Hope to see everyone Monday, uh, Memorial Day, ten-thirty for the parade. We always have a great turnout. Pay tribute to our, uh, amazing veteran service members, people that didn't make it home. Um, so hope to see everybody there. Great job, Selectman Harrington. At this time, we're gonna go to tab number two, uh, which is, uh, ah, hold on a sec. Uh, approval of the minutes. This time, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the May sixth, twenty-twenty-five, open session meeting minutes.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion made by Selectman Anderson, second by Selectman Harrington. Any further discussion? Being none, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Select Woman Rouse?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
Lamoth?
Lamoth, yes.
Gallo, yes, motion carries five-zero. Hey, looks like, um, new business. Do we have the applicants ready for the, uh, and let's, Select Board, uh, first of all, do we have the applicants ready for the one-day license application shovel town brewery at White Barn Farm per our agenda? Is everyone on here?
Uh, this is Frank Altieri from Shovel Town Brewery. I'm on the line.
Hey Frank, how you doing?
Very good, thank you.
Katie, trouble from White Barn Farm is here as well.
Hey Katie, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Okay, board members, I, I was talking to Mike and Michelle about this earlier. On agenda items like this, where we've seen this a thousand times, um, instead of me rolling down each one of you, I'm just gonna ask, does any of the, after we get through the application, I'm just gonna ask if any board members has a question or comment, please raise your hand or speak up and we'll go that way. Is that okay?
Please have one question, Mr. Chair.
Hold on, let me just, let me, and I appreciate that, Selectman Harrington. Let me just give them an opportunity to give us a quick summary and then I'll turn it over to you. And you can do that. So, Mr. Altieri, are you taking the lead for, uh, this group?
Uh, I, yeah, I can certainly talk to Shovel Town Brewery. I submitted the applications. Um, this is a series of applications that we are partnering with, uh, the folks at White Barn Farms for their community nights there. Um, it's been very successful in the past, no incidents. Um, we do these all the time, um, and we really get a lot of positive feedback from the community about having these types of events. And then I could let Katie to, um, uh, add some color to that.
Go ahead, Katie.
Yeah, so, uh, we did this series last year and it really helped bring some traction to the farm on one of our slower nights. Partnering with Shovel Town has been, you know, a great way to get a little bit of a new audience to come to our farm as well.
I would agree. I had, I heard nothing but positive feedback, other than, you know, a couple murmurs of increased traffic, but manageable. Uh, I think it's a great thing to do with a select board, as many people know, support our local businesses, including White Barn Farm. So anything we do to, anything we can do to increase traffic there, have people spend money, listen to music, have a beverage, sounds like a win-win. I will say, and I don't know if this is what you're gonna ask Selectman Harrington, we do have a, a, a limit on these one-day licenses of twelve per calendar year. It looks to me like there's nine here, plus three that we've already approved. Mike King, you shaking your head, yes? So I, I think the board would need to discuss at a future meeting if we want to increase, uh, the limit of twelve. I'm told that's a select board policy. We have the authority to do that, putting on an agenda, future agenda item, and discussing it. Yes, Mike King? Or no?
Yes, yes, that is corrected. If it's a select board policy, you would have the authority.
And it is a select board policy, correct, Mr. King?
Yes, that is my understanding.
Alright, so let's clarify that and we can talk about that at a later date. At this time, I'd ask the board members, I've, we've have an application. We're assuming that police and fire have signed off on this. If they haven't, it wouldn't be in front of us. Uh, we're assuming that everyone's tip certified, uh, that's gonna be touching the alcohol and serving it. Uh, those are all general assumptions. If that's not the case, let us know. And Selectman Harrington, please go ahead and ask your question.
Uh, just had one comment, Mr. Chair, uh, thank you to both, uh, Shovel Town and White Barn for presenting it this way. It just makes life so much easier for the select board, as long as all the other public safety and parking and all that stays the same. Um, glad to have this behind us for the, what appears to be the rest of the season.
I would agree. That's very helpful. Thank you. They took our suggestion at the last meeting. Chris and the team did a great job of grouping some dates together, so, uh, thank you for that, Selectman Harrington. Thank you, White Barn, and thank you, Shovel Town. Uh, any, anybody else before we bring this to a vote? Seeing no, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the special one-day license applications for Shovel Town, uh, Brewery at events at four-thirty-one South Street, White Barn Farm, from four PM to nine PM on the following dates. June nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five, July tenth, twenty-twenty-five, July seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five, July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, August seventh, twenty-twenty-five, August fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five, and to utilize the use of electronic signatures.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, motion made by Selectman Harrington, second by Selectman Anderson. Any further discussion?
I just have a quick question, and that is, uh, on your twelve, uh, license limit, is that per venue or per, um, uh, the person requesting it? Because, and the reason I'm asking, and I don't wanna skirt the system, but I've seen in other towns, um, what we've done is we did, um, say, uh, twelve under Shovel Town, and then we did a few under Station One, which is our other, um, other entity, which also has licenses to do this kind of thing.
So, Mr. Altieri, it's a great question. I'll let Mr. King answer that, but before I do, I, I don't know if you heard me mention this a minute ago. This is a select board policy, so this board actually has the, uh, the, uh, authorization to put that on a future agenda item and actually increase the limit from twelve to whatever we see fit. So either way, the select board wants to work with you, uh, and White Barn Farm to make sure that, you know, we're not hitting your limit. But with that being said, Mr. King, uh, you know, what, what, what's your thoughts on Mr. Altieri's creative workaround?
So my understanding is that the twelve limit is to the holder of the common victual or license, which would be White Barn Farm.
It's my understanding as well. Okay, we'll get clarification on that. We'll put that on a future agenda item. But Frank, or Mr. Altieri, that's, this does not affect anything that you're proposing tonight.
Correct, I, I understand that. Thank you.
Okay, so I had a motion made by Selectman, uh, was it Harrington?
Yes.
And a second by Selectman Anderson?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Being none, we'll do a roll call vote. Select Woman Rouse?
Yes.
Anderson? Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
Lamoth?
Lamoth, yes.
Gallo, yes, motion carries five-zero. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your.
This time, looking forward to it, Mr. Altieri, thank you. At this time, we're gonna go to tab number four. Uh, we're gonna try to squeeze this in before the, um, six-fifty, um, public hearing. We have an update on Memorial Day Observance by, uh, Jerry McGovern. Um, Mr. McGovern, are you with us? Mr. McGovern, are you with us? Alright, we're gonna move on. We'll come back to that. Someone remind me, we didn't hit that one? Okay, um, Chief McGrath, tab number six. Do we have ti- actually, hold on a second, tab number five. Do we have time for a quick update from Police Chief McGrath on the George C. Labonte Way dedication?
I'm here.
Hi Chief, how you doing tonight?
Pretty good.
Good. Can you give the board a quick update on this, sir?
So I actually spoke with, uh, Mr. McGovern today to make sure we were coordinating everything effectively. And, uh, the parade's gonna kick off at ten-thirty. Usually ends about ten minutes to noon or noon. And, uh, immediately from there, the police contingent and the Labonte family will be at the front lawn of the town hall, uh, where we'll dedicate the, uh, Deputy Police Chief George C. Labonte Way, which is that road that runs from the, between the town hall and TD North, down in front of the public safety building and ending at Randall Road.
Sounds fantastic. I hope your select board's invited.
We're working on your invites right now. We had, we had, we had some anxious last-minute, um, moments where some of the material, including the signs themselves, had been delayed in transport. Uh, but that's, that was resolved actually partially today. The signs are being picked up tomorrow, so a little bit of teeth grinding going on.
Well, I'm glad to hear you got, you got it pulled off, Chief, and, uh, no formal invite needed. We'll take this as our invite. Well, I, I, I can't speak for the board members, but I'll be there with bells on, ready to pay homage to George and his family.
And, and you, you all will get an invite anyway, probably tomorrow, so one way or the other. This is an invite and you'll get a second one.
Thank you, Chief. Anything else, anything else for the board before I turn it over to them?
Uh, from me, uh, or from the board or from me?
No, you. Do you have anything else to tell our board before we, I let them ask you any questions they might have?
No, no. If they have any questions, I'm here.
Alright, board members, anyone have any questions for our chief regarding the George Labonte Way? No? Alright, Chief, we're looking forward to it. We'll see you Monday.
Mr. McGovern?
Hey, uh, hey Jerry, how are you?
I apologize for, uh, I'm at, uh, a different computer than I usually want, so.
Don't worry, don't worry about it.
So I'm giving you, uh, I got, it looks like six, five, five or six minutes to give you a, a quick update. Um, you have in your packages, uh, with your permission to give you.
Just let me say this. At this time, let's all go back to tab number four. We're joined by, uh, Jerry McGovern, uh, veteran and former select board member, uh, and active veterans person in the community. Uh, Jerry, can you please give us an update, sir?
So you have in your package, I believe, uh, the sequels of events.
We do.
Day, uh, beginning with the, the order of march for the parade, which, as you mentioned, kicks off promptly at ten-thirty from, uh, King Philip Plaza. Uh, there's a series of speakers at the cemetery and then we do our final, um, honors at the common. Um, it is mostly the same as it has been in the past years, not a whole lot of differences, but a couple. One is that we do, we do have two color guards this year. We have a, a color guard coming from the Mass, um, uh, Army National Guard, who, who'll be leading the parade. Uh, the master ceremonies at the cemetery will be Mr. Scott Smith, who was our relatively new Veteran Services Officer. Um, our keynote speaker will be Mr. Nick, uh, Topacek, who has recently become the commander of the American Each and Post two-twenty-five here in Rantham. He's taking over for, uh, Joe Manning, who has been the, the commander for the past eight years and, and Nick will mention in this mark, some, some tributes to, to Joe. Um, got a couple minor things with the music being changed around on some plans, but nothing, uh, really drastic. Um, we do have a weather plan in place. I'm watching the weather closely and I am hoping that we don't have to address that. But if we do, uh, there's two plans. One is if it's a light rain and the band cannot participate, uh, we won't do the parade without the band, so we'll just, as we have done in the past, all assemble at the cemetery at ten-forty-five and do the speakers at, at that point. If it's a heavy rain, uh, I've coordinated with, uh, Pastor Ken Linden from the Congressional Church. And if it's a very heavy rain, we will do the, the speakers and the events in the church and then a short, uh, honors afterwards outside on the common. And I think that's a pretty quick recap. If I have any questions, I'm certainly welcome to, uh, to hear them and answer them.
Select board members, does anyone have any questions for Mr. McGovern?
No.
Jerry, it looks like we don't have any questions. Appreciate your, uh, coordination with this, uh, update from the board. We will be there Monday and looking forward to seeing you then.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night. Okay, uh, six-forty-seven, looks like we have a minute here. Can we do, uh, can we go to tab six really quickly, everybody? Perpetual care account. Um, so this is a, um, a vote to approve the expenditure of funds for perpetual care account. A quote for an infected tree spraying. We have Brian Antonoli here with us. Brian, uh, really quickly, can you just walk us through, I think this is pretty standard, but tell us what this is, sir, please?
Yeah, beach tree, um, in center of the, uh, General Cemetery, excuse me, um, gets treated every year, um, to make sure that, uh, to keep away disease and that kind of thing. It's, uh, one of the oldest trees up there, big beautiful tree, and that's what's required to, uh, keep it healthy.
Great. Uh, we have the invoice here in the packet, um. So I, I don't have any further questions. Does any of the board members have any questions for Mr. Antonoli?
No questions.
Eking the heads no at this time. But, uh, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the expenditure from the perpetual care account for infected tree spraying not to exceed nine-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Anderson, second by Selectwoman Rouse. Any further discussion? Being none, do a roll call vote. Selectwoman Rouse?
Yes.
Selectman Anderson?
Anderson, yes.
Selectman Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
Selectman Lamoth?
Lamoth, yes.
Gallo's a yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Um, looks like we have two minutes. Can we get through? Uh, tab seven, uh, go to, can we go to tab seven? Vote to approve expenditure of funds from the Conservation Recreation Land Acquisition Fund. Um.
That may have a little bit more discussion.
Oh, yeah, it does. You're right.
Maybe, maybe tab nine, that's a quick resignation acceptance?
Let's do that. Sorry, sorry about that. Thanks, Mike. Tab nine, please, everybody. Would, this is a resignation acceptance of Thomas Maloney with regrets from the Historical Commission. Resignation letter from Tom Maloney, um, you can't, uh, we, we can't serve per Town Charter, Section Three dash one, which prohibits an elected town official from holding any other town office. I hereby resign from the Rantham Historical Commission. It's because he's elected member of the planning board, correct, Mike? Um, well, I know he's on the planning board, but that's why he has to resign.
That's correct, per the charter.
Per the charter. Uh, with regrets, uh, any further discussion? This time, Chair would entertain a motion to accept with regrets the resignation of Thomas Maloney from the Historical Commission.
So moved.
Motion made by Selectman Anderson, second by Selectman Harrington. Any further discussion? Being none, we'll do a roll call vote. Selectwoman Rouse?
Yes, with regrets.
Selectman Anderson?
Yes, with regrets.
Selectman Harrington?
Yes, with regrets.
Uh, Selectman Lamoth?
Yes.
Gallo, yes, with regrets, motion carries five-zero. Uh, we're happy to have him on the planning board, though. Do we, Mike, do I have time to do the other reg, uh, the other resignation or do I have to get going?
Uh, the time is now six-fifty for the hearing, but you can start it later. Uh, you just can't start it earlier.
Alright, well, we're gonna go to tab number ten, uh, if the board allows. And we're gonna do a second resignation acceptance with regrets of Justin Slicinger from the Historical Commission with very similar reasons to what we just discussed. Uh, there is a resignation letter. I don't know that we have to read it into the, the record. Uh, it's the same reason that Tom is with, had to resign, and we're excited to have Justin also on the planning board. Uh, so at this time, Chair would entertain a motion to accept with regrets the resignation of Justin Slicinger from the Historical Commission.
So moved.
Motion made by Selectman Anderson, second by Selectman Harrington. Any further discussion? Being none, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Gallo's a yes, uh, Selectman Lamoth?
Yes.
Selectman Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
Selectman Anderson?
Yes, with regrets.
Selectwoman Rouse?
Yes, with regrets.
Motion passes five-zero with regrets. At this time, we're gonna go to tab thirteen. This is a public hearing. Okay, my favorite thing. So time's now six-fifty-one. This is us, this is the public hearings for six-oh-four Thurston Street, license application for propane underground storage. Um, we have a documentation in our packet, the application for propane storage, six-oh-four Thurston Street. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to open the public, a license application for propane underground storage for six-zero-four Thurston Street.
So moved.
Motion made by Selectman A- Anderson, second by Selectman Harrington. Any further discussion? Being none, we'll do a roll call vote. Selectwoman Rouse?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
Lamoth?
Lamoth, yes.
Gallo, yes, motion carries five-zero. Now, the Chair would entertain a motion to waive the reading of the public hearing notice, discussion and public comment.
So moved.
Motion, okay, motion made by Selectman Anderson, second by Selectman Harrington. Any further discussion? Being none, we'll do a roll call vote. Selectwoman Rouse?
Yes.
Anderson?
Anderson, yes.
Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
Lamoth?
Lamoth, yes.
Gallo, yes, motion carries five-zero. We are open. Okay. Mike, who's gonna be taking the lead with this now that we're open?
Uh, it would be Deputy Fire Chief McMorrow.
Deputy Fire Chief McMorrow? Wow, fantastic to have you. Are you here, Deputy Chief? Uh-oh. First, first meeting with the select board and he's, he's not, he's not here. He better be on a call.
He, he is listed.
I see him.
He's on mute.
I see him. Oh, hold on. Hi, here, I'm having microphone issues. Standby. We just got a, uh, uh, we got a message in the chat from my Deputy Chief. So he's hearing us.
Mr. Chief?
Talk about him. Yes.
Perhaps I can help him?
Yeah.
Now, why don't you zoom in to his computer, Jerry? Figure it out. I'll give the Deputy Chief a minute. Um, one of our finest here in Rantham. So, the, just to get things rocking, though, this is a notice, um, about this storage, uh, propane underground storage tank. Uh, gave us the parcel ID of P O six, one-three-zero, also known as six-oh-four Thurston. We have in our packet, uh, uh, we have the application here, uh, we have documentation, uh, within the packet. There was a follow-up, uh, email, I think, to the select board from our, our chief, uh, Antonio Marino, that I think the board got. Um, so I think, um, we're gonna let the Deputy Chief, if he can figure out his technical issues, uh.
I was, but I'm here.
Hey, Deputy Chief McMorrow, how are you?
Good, sorry, my privacy settings have my microphone off.
Don't worry about it. I was telling everyone you were running into a burning building somewhere heroically, so it's great that you're not doing that and it's great to have you here with us tonight. Can you do the board a favor and give us a quick summary as to what we're trying to accomplish with this, uh, permit?
Yep, so, uh, the history of this goes back to two thousand eighteen. They currently have, um, two thousand gallons of underground propane storage, which was installed in two thousand eighteen when the building was constructed. Uh, was inspected by the fire department and the plumbing inspector, um, met all provisions of the fire code. Um, the permit is still outsta- is still, um, valid. Uh, suburban propane is their supplier. Um, so the tanks were filled. They're still being used to this day. Um, the reason that we're here this evening is because EverSource reached out, uh, they got a new property manager. They wanted to do a safety walkthrough to make sure that all their permitting and, uh, flammable storage was in compliance. And upon the walkthrough, we found they had eighty-five-pound propane tanks that they're using for the forklifts. Uh, they were not permitted. Um, their storage for it, however, was, uh, met all the provisions of the fire code. Their storage practices are excellent. And, um, we told them the process, that they need to have it permitted, but this brought them over the two-thousand-pound, uh, two-thousand-gallon threshold. Um, and they need to get a license for the town as well. So, um, that's why they filled out the application. And they also have a permit waiting in the queue right now, if this goes through this evening, and that will be, um, issued to them.
Okay, so from your perspective, Deputy Chief, the fire department is completely okay with this. Um, as you've mentioned, they seem to be a good operator. They're very careful. We've had no issues with them. Uh, so you, you or Chief Marino have no issues with us, uh, approving this?
Nope, we have no issues with it. Um, they've tried to do the right thing and they were self-reporting about it, so we are, um, uh, we're in support of this.
Alright, at this time, I'm gonna open it up to the board members. I am gonna go through, cause it's a public hearing. So I'm gonna start with, uh, Selectwoman Rouse. Do you have any questions for the Deputy Chief?
I do not, um, answered all the questions. Everything seems in line and they approve it. I'm good with it.
Thank you, uh, Selectman Anderson.
Yeah, I concur. Uh, no, no further questions.
Thank you, sir. Selectman Harrington?
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, Amanda, was there a letter from Anabutter, uh, but I wasn't able to open it, or is that something else?
There was a letter from Anabutter. Um, it also had the responses from Chief Marino on it.
Okay, so they were in support of it because I couldn't open it?
Um, they had more questions about the purpose of the license.
Okay, so have they been asked and answered?
I believe the chief had reached out. He responded via email and I know he was trying to reach to them, reach them via telephone. I'm not sure if he was able to contact them. Through that way.
Alright, so the chief signed off. He's on board with it. Public Safety's on board with it, and if necessary, the chief can reach out to them if he hasn't.
I would imagine so, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, yeah.
Thank you.
I, I can further add, the, the police chief's made two telephone calls and left voicemails with his phone number for a callback if the resident has any, um, further need for questioning.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Sounds like we dotted our i's, crossed our t's, right? Uh, anyone else have any questions? Uh, no, did I ask everyone? Oh.
No.
Uh, Selectman Lamoth, I forgot about you. I'm sorry, sir.
We're good to go. This is very open and, and, um, full disclosure. It's great.
Okay, good. I concur. Uh, so at this, oh, we gotta have the public. This is a public be, hearing. Uh, so, um, folks, at this time, we're gonna open it up for public comments. Uh, the rules of public comment are simple. Please, uh, raise your hand, state your name. If you, if you can, put your camera on, great. State your name and address for the record. You'll get two minutes, uh, to make a public comment. Uh, at this time, do we have anyone that would like to make a public comment? I'd like to give this a quick second, in case anyone's a little gun-shy. Alright, doesn't look like it. I'll give five more seconds. Okay, uh, at this time, uh, if there's no further comment, uh, the Chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing for license application for propane underground storage for six-oh-four Thurston Street?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion made by Selectman Anderson, second by Selectman Harrington. Any further discussion? Being none, we'll do a roll call vote. Selectwoman Rouse?
Yes.
Selectman Anderson?
Anderson, yes.
Selectman Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
Selectman Lamoth?
Lamoth, yes.
Chris Gallo, yes, motion carries five-zero. And now, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the license application for propane storage for six-oh-four Thurston Street and to authorize the use of electronic signatures.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Anderson, second by Selectwoman Rouse. Any further discussion? Being none, we'll do a roll call vote. Selectwoman Rouse?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
Lamoth?
Lamoth, yes.
Chris Gallo, yes, motion carries five-zero. Thank you all. Thank you, Deputy Chief McMorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and to members of the board.
Okay. Okay, so now we're, um... Oh, now, uh, now we're out of public, uh, we're out of public comment, out of public hearing. Um, back to the agenda. We were at, I think we were at tab number seven? If I'm not mistaken?
Yes.
Okay, Mike, this was the one that's gonna require, I think, just a little bit more, uh, 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 communication. So this is the vote to approve the expenditure of funds from the Conservation and Recreation Land Acquisition Fund. Um, and, Mike, why don't you go ahead and, um, take the lead with this, and then pass it back to us for our vote?
Sure. Uh, so to provide a little bit of context, um, for, for tonight's vote, uh, so the, the Select Board received a, a notice of a right of first refusal opportunity, uh, this past January, uh, for twenty ninety-five West Street, which is a sixty-five acre parcel in West Remtham. And after receiving input from town committees, uh, the Select Board voted to exercise the town's right of first refusal. Uh, the board subsequently called a special town meeting for the voters to decide on whether to fund a borrowing authorization to meet the proposed purchase price of two point five million dollars in the seller's, uh, purchase and sale agreement. Uh, on May twelfth, town meeting voted to authorize a one point nine million dollar borrowing amount for the twenty ninety-five West Street land acquisition. Uh, before the board tonight is a proposed vote to authorize the expenditure of six hundred thousand dollars from the town's Conservation and Recreation Land Acquisition Fund, which in combination with the one point nine million dollar Community Preservation Act debt, debt authorization equals the two point five million dollar purchase price to acquire the twenty ninety-five West Street property.
Okay. Excellent summary. Uh, so essentially, just to reiterate, the board did not have to vote to exercise our first right of refusal on this parcel. We did, however, because this board believes the will of the voters is more important than our own personal beliefs. Um, I just wanna make sure that's recognized, because I wanna congratulate my fellow board members, because, uh, although uh, I believe all of us, we're not in support of this article at town meeting, we support democracy, and we wanted the will of the voters to be heard, it clearly was, and we're happy about that. Uh, if, if that's okay, my fellow board members, for me to say that. I don't wanna speak on your behalf, but I believe those are the facts. Um, so tonight is more of a formality, Mr. King, if that's an accurate statement. Of course, the townspeople voted to do this, we're not gonna vote against it. Uh, so, at this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the expenditure of funds from the Conservation and Recreation Land Acquisition Fund for the purpose of purch, of purchasing, uh, property located at two zero five nine five West Street in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars.
So moved.
Motion made by Selectman Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Selectwoman Rouse, we'll give it to her. Any further discussion? Do a roll call vote. Selectwoman Rouse?
Yes.
Uh, Selectman Anderson?
Anderson, yes.
Selectman Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
Uh, Selectman Lamoth?
Lamoth, yes.
Chris Gallo, yes. Motion carries five zero. Okay, next, we're gonna go to tab... What's this, tab eight?
Yeah.
We're gonna go to tab eight. This is a Conservation Commission Trust Fund. So this is, we're gonna take a vote here, uh, to approve the expenditure of funds from the Conservation Commission Trust Fund in conjunction with the purchase of two zero nine five West Street. So there's a letter from, uh, Resident Leo Eminens, also the Chair of the Conservation Commission, uh, which was presented, um, either before, was it, it was before and at town meeting, Mike? This letter was also presented?
The, the letter is dated, the, the day of town meeting. It was, uh, presented to the board, and I believe was also mentioned at town meeting as well.
Correct, okay. So, uh, there's no reason to read the letter into the record unless you tell me we need to? Because it's in our packet?
I, I don't believe it's necessary.
Okay, so, uh, I don't think any further discussion is needed unless board members have particular questions. If anyone has any questions, please ask now.
Well, I was wondering, Michael, do we know, or where, how will we receive, if we do receive money from Pawtucket Water, uh, Group? How will that offset the monies we spend for the full amount?
Sure.
Where, where will it go?
Selectman Lamoth, before he answers that, were you gonna cover that at this, uh, item, Mike? Or were you gonna cut, touch upon that with a general CPC kind of summary, just for the, the residents?
Uh, I, I can cover this now.
Go ahead.
So, in ter, in terms of the borrowing rate for the Pawtucket Water Supply Board, that, that's something the town's actively working on with them, uh, legally, because one of the requirements of their funding is a conservation restriction, uh, which the town is need, is required to do, put on the property anyways due to the utilization of the Conservation and Recreation Land Acquisition Fund. Um, the second piece with Pawtucket Water Supply Board is the requirement of a right of first refusal, um, which is on the town meeting warrant for June second to be authorized. Um, it does take a town meeting vote. Um, it... Now, moving forward, uh, what, what we have before us, if, if this next motion goes through, um, is a reduction in the amount to be borrowed to about one million eight hundred and seventy thousand. Um, that would be the borrowing amount for the CPA fund. If any amounts come in, um, from Pawtucket Water Supply Board, DCR, I know there's conversations with Mass Audubon, um, they would come in as a reimbursement to the CPA fund, um, and those would close out to undesignated fund balance, which is their equivalent of free cash, and could be utilized in the future, um, for other projects.
Perfect.
And Mike, while you're going down this path, can you, can you briefly just, just, you know, remind us the buckets that the CPA funds can go into, what we can use for, you know, what we can use for each bucket, what we can purchase with each bucket? There's a lot of questions surrounding town that I've heard post-town meeting, and even at town meeting, uh, where some people, uh, didn't know that, uh, you know, the CPC, uh, you know, exercising this right to use the six hundred thousand and then borrow, um, the, the, this confusion about, you know, quote unquote, does that handcuff us from future land acquisitions using CPC CPA funds? So I'd like some clarification on that point, and then just a, a quick clarification on the multiple buckets that, because people are saying like, well, why can't we just take one, money from one bucket and just throw it in the other bucket? I just don't think there's a general understanding.
Fair. Uh, so to, 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 to answer your, your, your first point and just reiterate, uh, the, the, the borrowing, right, is, is gonna have a considerable amount of debt service associated with it for ten years. That, that's the borrowing amount, it's about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, so what does that mean? Um, that's two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars out of the, the CPC budget that they would normally use to fund projects on an annual basis that will no longer be available. Uh, the way the CPC budget works is ten percent amounts are required to go into three reserves. Um, so there's a reserve for open space and, and recreation, there, there's a reserve for community housing and a reserve for historical. Uh, so the proposed budget for FY twenty-six for the CPC is, uh, four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars overall. So if you do ten percent into each bucket, that's forty-one thousand three hundred. Um, now, normally, there would be a, a budgeted reserve, um, amount in addition to those buckets, which, uh, so those, those three ten percent reserve buckets, those can only be expended for projects that fit within the guidelines of those ten percent reserves. So, that, that forty-one thousand three hundred, that's in open space and recreation, can only be spent on open space and recreation. If it's in historical, it can only be spent on historical preservation, and if it's in community housing, it can only be spent on community housing. There can't be any transferring of funds. Um, projects, um, cannot be split between those buckets. In the past, uh, there was the budgeted reserve, uh, which has been a significant amount over two hundred thousand dollars, and that's the catch-all. That money can be used to supplement projects that fall of any of those three categories. Um, so if you had, um, for example, it actually is a, a great example, is the two hundred thousand dollars into the land acquisition fund that's been happening the last several years. Um... The, the ten percent reserve bucket doesn't cover that. What, what you would need is the budgeted reserve to cover the remaining amount, um, in order to fund a large project or, 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 uh, appropriation of, of that figure. So, to, to summarize, moving forward, you're, there will be smaller amounts available for projects um, with the state issuance, um, and it's gonna be taking place for the next ten years.
All right, I think that's a, a very good summary. Uh, I'll ask the board members before we go to the motion. Does anyone have any questions or follow-up comments regarding the CPC buckets, uh, and overview that Mike has just given us? I'm seeing no. All right, appreciate the overview, Mike. I think it's very helpful. Um, any further discussion, uh, by the way, before we, uh, uh, some, well, make this motion, or maybe you already made the motion, gonna have to remind me, uh, about the expenditure of the thirty-three six 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 oh two plus accumulated interest. Uh, any further discussion on that?
No.
Now, did we in fact make the motion? I'm losing my, I'm losing my marbles here. Um...
I think you did.
In fact? Did, did anyone, okay?
So moved, I'll do it, let's do it.
Uh, well, let me do it the right way then, Roy, I appreciate that, just in case, cover our bases. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the expenditure of funds from the Conservation Commission Trust Fund for the purpose of purchasing property located at two oh nine five West Street in the amount of thirty-three thousand six hundred sixty-six dollars and two cents plus accumulated interest. Motion was made by Selectman Lamoth, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Selectwoman Rouse, any further discussion? Being none, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Selectwoman Rouse?
Yes.
Selectman Anderson?
Anderson, yes.
Uh, Selectman Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
Selectman Lamoth?
Lamoth, yes.
Gallo, yes. Motion carries five zero. All right, I'm just making sure, we hit all the above tabs, I believe, right? I believe we're on tab eleven. Mike, are you tracking that with me? Are we on tab eleven?
I am in agreement.
Okay, so, uh, tab eleven is Assignment of Motions for the June second, twenty twenty-five Annual Town Meeting. We have documentation in our packet that tell, that shows the warrant, and it shows the three articles that are gonna be moved by the Select Board. Article one, Article fourteen, and Article fifteen. We're looking for volunteers to move these articles. I think, um, do we have any volunteers before I start volunteering?
I'll move one, whatever you want.
Which one you wanna move?
One.
Article one. Harrington's gonna move. Uh, Mike, let's make a note, and man, can we make a note of that? Bill's gonna move Article one. Who's gonna move Article fourteen, sell, uh, sell right of first refusal? I think Jim Anderson just raised his hand.
I did.
All right, Selectman Anderson's moving Article fourteen, thank you for that. Last one, Article fifteen, Civil Service?
Since I won't be in attendance, I'm gonna not be available.
There you go.
I made that easy for you, Roy.
Selectman Lamoth, thank you for raising your hand on that.
Yep.
Uh, we're gonna miss you, Selectwoman Rouse, but thank you, Selectman Lamoth, for that. So, Selectman Lamoth will move Article fifteen. Okay. Any further discussion on that, Mike? There's no vote needed, right?
No vote needed.
Thank you, Selectman Anderson. All right, so we're good with tab eleven? Looks like we're gonna go to tab twelve, which is a gift acceptance. Um, okay, so tab twelve is a gift acceptance. It's a copier from the Friends of Fisk for the Fisk Public Library. In our packet, we have a documentation letter from the Friends of Fisk. Uh, I, I mean, I don't, uh, I don't think we need to read it into the record, but that someone's buying them, uh, uh, I'm sorry, the Friends of Fisk are pleased to enclose a check for the fifty-five hundred dollars for purchasing the copier. Um, is there anything else that we need to discuss, board? Do we have any questions? No? No? All right, let's take a vote. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the gift in the amount of fifty-five hundred dollars from the Friends of the Fisk for the purpose of purchasing a new copier.
So moved.
Motion made by Selectman, Selectwoman Rouse, seconded by Selectman Harrington. Any further discussion? Being none, we'll do a roll call vote. Selectwoman Rouse?
Yes.
Selectman Anderson?
Anderson, yes.
Selectman Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
Selectman Lamoth?
Lamoth, yes.
Gallo, yes. Motion carries five zero. Okay, old business, tab fourteen. Uh, Mr. King, can you give us an update on MBTA Communities?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, so, hearings for, uh, additional MBTA Communities Act litigation filed in Superior Court, uh, brought by the towns of Duxbury, Wenham, and Weston were heard on May ninth. Uh, still no decision has been rendered by Judge Gilde on the town of Remson's motion for preliminary injunction that was heard on April second. The judge has heard, um, similar arguments, uh, now twice, the, the, the ones that were made by the town of Remtham by Attorney Tallerman on April second, and then Attorney Tallerman also had the opportunity to, uh, argue on behalf of his client, the town of Wenham, on May ninth, um, on, under similar circumstances. Uh, I'll, I'll also note that the MBTA Communities Act has been subject, uh, to multiple proposed budget amendments in the state senate. Um, the Commonwealth's annual budget is not only financial legislation, but can also include policy changes which are known as outside sections of the budget. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mike, so just, uh, just so ever the viewing public understands that, what does that mean? Uh, subject to what you just said, the second part? The budget is subject to what amendments? What, 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 what?
So, so, yeah, well, we do, when we do the, the budget on the municipal level, right, it's, it's financials, it's, it's dollar amounts only. Um, if we, if we wanted to change, for example, town bylaws, that's separate, that'll be, that'll be a different article, it wouldn't be part of the budget. Um, at the state legislature level, you can also enact policy changes as part of the budget. Um, and those are known as outside sections. So you have your, you have your core budget, which is funding for state agencies. Um, but then there's also the ability for legislators to have amendments that are known as outside sections that they can tack onto the budget. They still go through the full legislative process, um, so they get our, they'll, they'll get argued and debated on the floor, and then they would go to a conference committee where they would have to be ironed out, um, between the two branches, um, for a final bill that's signed by the governor.
All right, thank you for clarification. Anyone have any questions for our town manager, Mike King, regarding MBTA Communities?
No questions, thank you.
Did a great job, Mike, thank you.
All right, Mr. King. Seeing no questions, we'll go to, uh, tab fifteen, which is our public comment section of the meeting. Uh, residents who wish to participate in public comment will be allotted two minutes to speak and must state their name and address for the record. At the start of public comment, a timer will be sent via message from Executive Assistant Amanda Vazapolo. It should be visible on the top of the screen, and an alarm will chime when your time's up. Uh, at this time, open it up for public comment. Anyone? Give it another five seconds. Wanna tell us what a great job we're doing? You like my shirt? Okay, none of that. All right, moving on. Uh, Mr. King, let's move into tab fifteen, which is, tab sixteen, which is the Town Manager Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, a few updates. Uh, I'll start with the, uh, Remtham Community Electricity Program. Uh, notices will reach mailboxes this week, providing information on the Remtham Community Electricity Aggregation Program. Uh, this is in coordination with our community outreach, uh, which includes a press release, social media, and a dedicated webpage, remthamcommunityelectricity.com. Uh, there will also be a hybrid informational meeting at the Fisk Public Library on June eleventh at seven PM, where residents can learn more about the program and ask questions. Uh, I also have an update on the proposed merger between the MECC and SEMREC. Uh, so previously, in February of, of twenty twenty-four, the Boards of Directors for the Metacomit Emergency Communication Center and Southeastern Massachusetts Emergency Communication Center, uh, executed a memorandum of understanding to move forward with evaluating and drafting a proposed plan to merge the two entities. I am reporting that a proposed MOA has now been drafted to facilitate the merger of both communication centers, uh, the timing of which is important, as there is now the possibility of receiving state nine-one-one, um, FY twenty-six development funds, uh, which would provide significant savings to member communities if the merger did go through. Uh, the MOA does state that if the state nine-one-one FY twenty-six development funds are not received, then the agreement could be reevaluated. Uh, this merger is supported by both Public Safety Chiefs, and would fall in line with the Select Board's goal of further regionalizing services to provide economies of scale and savings to the taxpayers. Uh, additional update on, uh, May twelfth Town Meeting results. Uh, just to share with the public, uh, the results of the May twelfth Town Meeting. Uh, Article one, to authorize the right of first refusal purchase of twenty ninety-five West Street through a debt authorization of one point nine million was approved... through a debt authorization of 1.9 million was approved by a standing vote of 347 to 39, meeting the required two-third threshold for a debt authorization. And Article 2, to appropriate $350,000 from the undesignated fund balance account of the CPA fund to fund electrical and lighting improvements to Sweat Park, passed on a voice vote. This will allow lighting to be installed at the sport courts, pathways, and stairs. And in my last update is that the Lake Pearl Boat Launch Access Road will be regraded tomorrow, May 21st. But the boat launch will still be accessible during that period. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. King, also while we have your attention and you're updating the public, we, the board got some great updates and pictures, and I was actually around downtown this past weekend, looking at all the progress on Sweat Park. It's really coming along. Greg, I know Greg Enos, our assistant town manager, has been kind of leading the charge. You know, he's been keeping the board abreast of the, the progress. I just want to congratulate you and Greg and your team. It looks like progress is really shaping up and it looks like we're getting close. Fair assessment?
Yes, I would agree and we hope to have the courts painted soon.
That's awesome. I encourage the residents to get down there when it's safe, you know, and check it out because it really looks fantastic. I just think it's going to add so much to our really wonderful downtown. And I just want to make one comment too, with my board members here. Mike, I, I think you're doing a great job with a lot of things, but I think per the board's kind of request for you to, you mentioned it a minute ago, a minute ago, regionalizing and, you know, kind of moving whatever we can towards like that consortium type spending. We've seen huge successes with, you know, buying fire trucks with other towns. I know you've, you know, we did, we made a move on health insurance, which saved the taxpayers a ton of money. You know, I just want to encourage you to keep investigating those opportunities. Our board is very fiscally responsible, our taxpayers are fisc, want us to be fiscally responsible and whatever we can continue to do to provide them opportunities to achieve economies of scale by partnering with other communities, increasing our buying power, whether it's, you know, this municipal aggregation with other communities trash, you know, different things that we spend a lot of money on. I want you to know you have the support of the board. So I, I hope I can say that for the board, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
So, great job, Mike. Continue to push that forward.
I will, thank you.
Okay, anyone have any other questions for our town manager regarding his town manager report before we move into executive session? Seeing none, at this time, yeah, we entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the police union and to enter back into open session for the purpose of adjournment only.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion made by Selectman Anderson, second by Selectman Harrington. Any further discussion? Being none, we'll do a roll call vote. Selectwoman Rouse?
Yes.
Anderson?
Anderson Z, yes.
Harrington?
Harrington, yes.
Lamoth?
Lamoth, yes.
Chris Gallo, yes, motion carries 5-0. We're going to boot off Cable 8, right? Who else do we need to boot off, if anybody?
Ross.
He can't stay on, Kenny?
Chief is on for the session.
Oh yeah, he can stay on. Even though I'd like to boot him, he can stay on.
Sure, you have no problem going.